Call this school committee meeting to order Monday, September 12th, 2022. Let's see, Mr. Hughes, would you lead us in a pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
School committee members and student reports, school committee chair report, I have nothing at this time. Resource Committee.
Resource Committee, we met this past week and we accepted our minutes from the August 3rd meeting. We had grants and donations to be submitted, Project Bread for $6,500, grants to accept, mental health grant for $127,500, donations to accept from J.R. Glass, 2625, and City United Church for $3555 for backpacks. Nicholas Packer gave an enrollment update. I think about 75 students increased this year, was it?
Almost 100.
Almost 100 students increased so far, and the official update will be October 1st. We approved a new 12-month position for Principal Secretary, a revision from the 8-3-22 meeting, which approved the network specialist. We approved increased compensation for substitute teachers. We increased tutor compensation. And we also signed a memorandum of agreement to bring forward tonight with the full committee. That's on the mentoring program. And we also discussed the Crocker Elementary School Corps project, the update potential and funding. And Mr. Jokel will be going over that funding tonight.
Any questions or concerns, comments? Seeing that school building, oh, I'm sorry.
Did you have the, I was here the last minute, did you have the final vote on all of those things that you referred to? Are they coming for a final vote tonight? Backpacks and things like that?
There was a 2-0 vote in the subcommittee meeting, and those will all come.
Oh, you're simply speaking of your subcommittee meeting.
Subcommittee meeting, yes.
Yes, thank you.
And that will follow tonight.
Any other questions?
Yes, sir.
Yes, Dr. Knight.
I didn't see, I guess it fall under the category of building repairs, right?
Buildings, there was no building needs meeting this past week.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Well, that makes the next category easy.
Yes.
Any questions or concerns? School building needs, thank you. Policy Committee?
I do have, Mrs. Reynolds gave me a list of questions that I will get the answers to that has to do with the solar panels that we have put in. And I will talk about that.
Thank you.
I do have a question about.
Yes, Dr. Knight.
Yes. The minutes does not show the, the report that I made last, last meeting. I had requested before if I could get permission to request some repairs and some painting at some of the schools. And I did get from the superintendent, a report with all the additions and the things that were purchased, but I didn't see anything for Goodrich Academy. Is there any?
We haven't, we haven't held a resource, a building needs meeting, and that will be soon. We will have a building needs meeting.
Thank you, sir.
And it's Goodrich School. Yeah, so.
Yeah, we're scheduling one for either the 22nd or the 29th of this month, Building Needs Meeting. And a number of those topics, really for every building is on there, but certainly the Goodrich topics, definitely.
Okay. Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Just the series of items that I brought up, and I gave you, as I told you I would, would you mind just reading those? I mean, they're just bullets, and, or would you like me to read them, because I wrote it? Do you have trouble with my writing? I printed.
Yes, I will see, you know, caution points on solar panels. Panels that made of plastic or glass. Plastic fades and clouds up. Every year, panel's efficiency decreases. Panels have to be clean, required maintenance personnel. Night, they don't produce. Cloudy days, they produce less. Sunny days, they may produce too much. They require a battery bank, battery banks are expensive. They will, they use lead acid or lithium. These raw materials are found only or mostly in China. These panels, the panels come from China. The lithium is non-degradable, makes us dependent on China for our needs. This, we will give to our building manager.
Thank you very much.
Any further questions? Seeing none, moving on. Policy Subcommittee, Mr. Horgan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, the Policy Subcommittee met on September 6th. We had a very full agenda. We didn't get to every item. The crowdfunding policy, the wellness program, the public common order of business policies were tabled for, to have a draft written by the administration and myself, and those will be brought up at the next meeting. The two policies that we did approve for final approval tonight are the school district legal status, Policy AA, and AB, the people in their school district. And I'd like to go forward with asking for the final approval from the committee for the school district legal status, Policy AA. But Policy AB, I'd like to have, come back to the Subcommittee for further amendments and deliberation. So I know we finally approved that, but we're actually, I'm going to ask that we have that come back to the Subcommittee for further approval. We'll be addressing the crowdfunding policy, the wellness program, and the public common order of business policies at the next meeting, along with the people in their school district and the other items that were on our agenda on the 6th, and that should be sometime next week.
Would you mind, would you mind reading that policy of the people's policy of the school district? That one that we, we're going to, you know, speak to further in the next policy meeting, but give the people some idea of what we're speaking about, considering?
We can read it when it comes up to the final approval, if we're going to table that, Mr. Mayor, but I think.
I think people need time to consider. We can't just say, we talked and we decided, and therefore, we'd like you to vote on this. I think people, we need to be educated to the issues. I'm simply asking you to read it.
When it comes before the committee, after the Subcommittee reviews it, that's will, that will be the time to deliberate.
Why can't the people know what we're considering in Subcommittee? The thing is.
It's published, what do you mean?
Yes.
It's on the agenda.
But that's not giving dignity to the people who have huge input in this thing. The reason I'm saying this is, it was even brought up to skip the first reading and go directly to the second reading, and then vote here, and people can't keep up.
That's not true.
Oh, I thought you asked the second reading.
That's not true. That's not accurate. We went through the first reading. You didn't have any objections or amendments to make to the policy, nor did Mr. Hughes. And because, as proper procedure asks, we go through the first reading, like we did, and then we waive the second reading, because there was no amendments or changes to make to the policy. So as it was read the first time.
You know, the simple thing that I'm asking you, Aiden, is to simply read the paragraph. It's a short paragraph of what we're going to be considering.
This wouldn't be the place in the General Committee meeting agenda where that would happen in the first place, suppose, Mayor.
This is the voting place, but I, to educate.
This is not where we're voting on the policy.
I realize that. I realize that.
This is the Subcommittee report.
Yes, I know, but the Subcommittee.
Once we get, once we get to that agenda item, that's when we would read it.
We have subcommittees because we're so overloaded. We have to work hard. We can't come up with like, a brief, two-minute, even less than that thing. The people need to be educated as to how the people that represent them think and feel.
Point of order here, point of order. Just on the people in their school district, Mr. Horgan is asking that to be tabled.
Yeah.
At this time, so tabling takes precedent, and that would, that would be it. And when it comes back.
We will discuss it when it comes before the committee again.
Yeah, please, and we'll, and we'll absolutely read it then, as.
Right.
Procedure would require.
I'm simply saying, to read it and to have the people make a knowledgeable judgment on it, they don't have sufficient time. We're here to help them. The Subcommittee's here to help the people, but we can't expect the unexpected of them to.
Well, I think it will be, it will be read next time, but it, now it's being tabled.
Yes.
So it can't, it can't be read.
But it'll be read and voted on at that time, and I'm just saying, give them a heads up as to what we're considering.
The next time, it will be, it will be read, and people will hear it.
Yep. Okay. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Any questions? Student Support Subcommittee, Dr. Knight.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The report from the Student Support Subcommittee from the last meeting was not recorded on the, the agenda. Can that be updated, please?
We haven't had a committee meeting yet.
We had one, yeah, a couple of weeks, few weeks ago.
Minutes.
We had, we had, we had a meeting here a few weeks ago, and it's not recorded.
In the minutes.
In the minutes. It's not there.
A school committee meeting or a Subcommittee meeting?
The Student Support.
Report, right.
Subcommittee report that I gave at the last meeting.
It's not in these minutes.
It's not in the minutes. Correct. Unless I overlooked it, but I didn't see it.
Okay.
Okay. Also, the Student Support Subcommittee visited three schools on Thursday, September the 1st. South Street, Long's Joe, and also Goodrich Academy. I heard what Vice Chair said about the meeting, that they're going to be, that's going to be taking place for the building repair and so forth. But I just want to reemphasize or state again that we are here to support, you know, to create, to try to create an environment, a client, a culture that is conducive for students to learn and that is safe. And when I went into Long's Joe, not Long's Joe, to Goodrich Academy, I saw some conditions that I reported before, that is not safe for our students. I want our students to be safe. There's a health issue on those carpets that's been there for decades. And not only that, but I take, for example, Mr. Mayor, I come to this, I love coming to this building. It's beautiful, you know, all our chairs look good, the table look good, I look in the roof, everything is beautiful. But I went into some of the classrooms at Goodrich Academy, please take notes so that something can be done. I know I'm not building, but I did ask permission before if I could do, say something about that or do something about that. And I see the paint cracking and falling off in the classroom. That is not good. Also, at the beginning, at the entrance, I had mentioned if we could get some paint in there. There is some large cracks in the wall at the entrance of Goodrich Academy. Can someone please take care of those when you schedule a meeting? Thank you very much. That would be it.
Mr. Superintendent.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just looking at the meeting minutes, it appears that the meeting minutes that you have are only the odd-numbered pages, so the even-numbered pages are not included. So.
It didn't make it in there. I'm looking at it now on electronic copy.
Thank you, thank you.
I guess I would perhaps ask the Chair to postpone the approval of these meetings because.
Minutes, yes.
They're not there, we'll do that next meeting.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for discovering that, Doctor.
You're welcome.
Where are we? School Personnel Committee. That would be me. There's nothing to report at this time. Executive Committee, nothing as well. Student Representatives.
Today at Pittsburgh High, the entire school was placed on lockdown for an hour and a half due to a possible threat of a weapon. The police were notified immediately. All necessary precautions were taken. According to a recent email from Tanya Jarrett, our principal, at 1:03 PM, it turned out that there were in fact two students who possessed knives. However, everyone was safe, and school resumed after the two students were removed from the high school. After Picture Day, which is October 14th, all students at Pittsburgh High are required to wear their ID badges at all times on school premises to ensure security and approve students and adults that are in that building. On Tuesday, September 13th, there will be an open house at Pittsburgh High from 4:00 to 6:00 PM, where teachers and parents will be able to meet each other in person. And lastly, on September 14th, all Pittsburgh Public Schools will have an early release day. Thank you, that is all I have to say.
Okay, I first must begin by addressing the elephant in the room. There was a lockdown at Pittsburgh High School today. I was in physics class when it happened, and pretty much immediately after I heard Ms. Jarrett's voice over the intercom, I entered the, there's a back room in the physics room, the closet there. Now, initially, almost everyone in my room thought it was a drill. And the way that we.
Thought it was what?
What?
Thought it was a drill?
We thought it was a drill. We thought it was an Alice drill. We expected some, one to happen sometime this year. And it wasn't a drill. And we figured that out because our friends had texted us on Snapchat. Rumors started floating around the school that somebody might have a gun, and that's how the word got out. About an hour later, we, we figured out, we got an email from the administration that there was, in fact, they were stopped. The perpetrating individuals were stopped, and that there was no evidence of a weapon. And then later, we figured out that there was evidence of a pocket knife and a kitchen knife being brought onto campus. So today was one of the most chaotic days of my entire high school career for that reason. Probably a third to a half of the school left early today after the lockdown, and I've only seen such a level of chaos happen at Pittsburgh High School in one other day in his, in my four years there, and that was the day we left after, before COVID. As jarring and as exceptional of an event this is, I do want to ask for discretion from our teachers, administrators, the school committee, and from our parents on making any impulsive decisions based upon our safety. I, I was at school today. I was there. I was in, in the, in the heat of it. And I, I think that we are capable of being reasonable in handling the rules as, as we go forward in handling the situation and in making sure that this doesn't happen again. Because as we know, this is not yet, this is the first time, or the first time in my career at Pittsburgh High School that such a thing has happened. And prior to this event happening already, there were a number of new rules introduced to ensure safety for Pittsburgh High School students. And some of the rules are not quite as popular among the student body. And I think as we go forward, we have, we have to show discretion in being impulsive after this, and we can't make brash decisions. And we also need to take the students and the teachers' abilities to govern their students into account. One issue that was faced is there's been bigger, a stronger opposition to cell phones recently. This is a statewide thing. I've talked with it with other Stu, School Committee reps from other parts of the state. They're trying to crack down on cell phones. And one of the major arguments against that, against a cellphone ban is in situations such as this one, it is difficult to get communication. We have Chromebooks in school, but you're not likely to be on your Chromebook and like, bring your Chromebook into a safe location during the school day. So in such a situation as what just happened today, it's important that students have the ability to communicate with their parents via cell phones or via some means. And that doesn't mean that we need to have students like tapping away on their phones in the middle of a meeting all day. One solution is a cellphone bucket that was used in my eighth grade year and in some of my ninth grade classes. It's a great compromise. The school's also introduced, increasing its emphasis on the ID policies. It's, it's an old policy. The ID policy has been there for a couple of years, to varying degrees. For the most part, it was not really enforced in previous years. Nowadays, there's sort of a degree of, of, quite honestly, fear that something could go wrong. And I think there's a, there's a number of ways that we can handle that, using the ID passes. One way that has been suggested was use them in lieu of hall passes. So sort of check them for people who are in the halls, people who might not be there. You can use that to save paper, save expenses on that. And you can use it as sort of like a barcode scanner instead of having to take your phone out and scan a QR code. We did that a couple of years ago. So the, so just all in all, today was a, today was quite a day. And I just want to assert or, and discourage any brash decision-making in, really quick after this, that's emotional. And we got to think out what we're going to do next in order to be successful and in order to make sure that this thing doesn't happen. Any questions?
Do you feel that there's going to be some type of regulation, new regulations that going to impede you from using your phones, or?
Yes. Every single teacher this year has, has mentioned a new regulation on phones. Has alluded to the fact that such a thing has happened.
To my knowledge, there has been no discussion of that at school committee level of policy. Mr. Horgan?
No, this is.
Nothing discussed at policymaking on use of phones?
No.
Well, your point's well taken.
Yeah. Thank you very much, Mr. Horgan. Excuse me?
Thank you. I appreciate, I'm sorry. I appreciate you coming forward and bringing up the concerns regarding the phones and being able to make contact, you know, God forbid, something do happen. But my concern is that the danger of having access to that is the wrong information getting out.
Yeah.
And creating hysteria and a panic that, you know what I mean? So I agree with you and I, and I support your, your, the idea of being able to communicate. But then the flip side of that is somebody who just thinks it's a game and putting out the wrong information, and then the student body taking it and running with it, and all of a sudden, we're trying to catch the ball from rolling downhill. So how do we?
Oh, quite honestly, I share your concerns fairly significantly. And that's why, that's why I suggest that we, we have to take this communication seriously. I alluded earlier to the fact that I learned about this via Snapchat. Because I know that Snapchat is not always reliable, we've had threats in the past, as Mr. Roach has been there, that were empty. They were not as nearly as backed as this threat. But it's easy for information to get out. It's easy for scariness to get out. And it's hard to tell truth from lies. Especially, we have our, the way this was notified, the way that we figured out that there was a threat at the school was this app called the Stop It app, and it's totally anonymous. And for the most part, it's been trustworthy. And I assume that the intentions today were trustworthy. In fact, I can almost guarantee that they were trustworthy intentions. But we do need to, I do 100% agree with you that there needs to be an avoidance of misinformation. I think that that's not necessarily the exclusive responsibility of the cellphone user, but also the responsibility of the disseminating parties, such as the school committee, such as the police department, to communicate information about what's going on that's actually going on. Because pretty much as soon as we got the email, it was fairly clear to everyone what happened, what kind of danger we were in, and what can be done in the future to prevent this.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
All right. So first of all, thanks for, to both of you for sharing that.
Thank you very much.
Hitting us right on the head. I have no doubt that for everybody at the high school today, it was nothing short of a traumatic event. Regardless of how these things play out, that kind of fear is, is traumatic. And it's going to be a teachable moment for everybody involved. When it comes to what you're bringing up about cell phones and bad information, communicating with parents from the kids and vice versa is paramount in those situations. But when it comes to bad information getting out, you know, I think that responsibility lies on the school district of communicating clearly, being decisive, but also making sure that they're right before they're vast in responding there. And that's a really hard balance every time, because you want to not let people be in that state of utter fear. Is, you want that to be as short as possible, but you also want to make sure that you're giving out the best and most clear and, you know, well-investigated information that you can. So we'll be looking at, and I'm sure all the administrators will be looking at, you know, the response from today and how to do better, where the shortcomings were, what, what was good and what was bad. But, you know, immediately when it comes to cell phones, I don't see that as, you know, any kind of impulsive regulations about that. You know, I don't see that on the horizon from me, or from the Policy Committee. But like I said, today is certainly going to be a teachable moment for, for all of us, and hopefully we can use it to, to make sure that we're better in those responses in the future.
I certainly.
God forbid we have to.
Oh, okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Horgan. I certainly agree with you, and I certainly believe that this, this incident, which thankfully resulted in no further injury and no damage to our school district, and for the most part, it was well-contained, we can learn from this and to make sure that more severe events never happen, because they should never happen. And I think that we saw from the flaws of today and from the things that went well today, we can emphasize the things that are helping us.
Ms. Reynolds.
This is the first that I heard about it, and I'm a little alarmed even to hear, and I'm not sure from what you said exactly what went down, because at the beginning of what you said, I wasn't relating to it as a danger situation, you know? So I'm not going to ask you for specifics right now. But in general, cell phones are a problem on many, many, a wide range of reasons. But I think that safety is one of the first reasons. And I would not, I think they're invaluable for, for parents to be able to give a child a phone and say, call me if anything happens. The child doesn't have to be accurate, doesn't have to comprehend the extent of the problem, but they, they can say that something's wrong. They can communicate where to be picked up or where to be. So I, I wouldn't rely totally on the experts, because I think that in that Texas thing, it was, one of the big problems was a miscommunication and misunderstanding between the experts as to who, who, you know? So certainly, there's a lot to do. And I, and I wouldn't say it's a one-off thing, because I think it's our culture.
Yeah, yes, yeah.
And they'll get a lot of input. We'll all try to do whatever we can do. Thank you.
Any further questions? Seeing none, moving, we will suspend approval of the previous minutes. Table those until they've been corrected and you have an opportunity to review them. Communications.
I'd like to have Police Chief Officer Nettie and Principal Jarrett come to the podium.
Chief Martino and Principal Jarrett, would you like to come forward and address the viewing audience and the folks that are here, please?
Well, first of all, good evening, Mr. Mayor, Superintendent Jokel. School Committee members, I wish I was here on better terms, but I wanted, I thought it was important that I addressed the school committee this evening to give an explanation of today's incident that had happened at Pittsburgh High. First of all, Mr. Gallo, thank you for a very articulate response you just gave. You know, I listened to what you said and, and I really take that to heart. So what I'd like to assure the school committee, first and foremost, is that the safety and security of each and every one of our students in the Pittsburgh Public Schools and the staff is paramount to me. Everything we do each and every day at the Pittsburgh Police Department is to make sure that we provide a safe learning environment for our children and for our staff each and every day. I speak to Superintendent Jokel almost as much as I speak to Mayor Dean Natale. We're constantly in communication, discussing what's happening in our public schools, areas that we can create better environments, areas of concern. We're in constant communication. As far as today goes, our technology that we purchased a few years ago, this Stop app, worked. This app that we purchased through a grant that the Police Department was awarded, provides anonymity to student body to alert us and the school staff of a potential threat, whether it's a physical threat, some type of harassment issue. It's an app that provides anonymity to those that want to reach out. So this morning at approximately 9:30 AM, and I'm going to speak in general terms, because I have to be well aware of the rights of two students that were placed in custody today, and I typically will not talk. two students that were placed in custody today. And I typically will not talk about ongoing police matters, but I will generalize around our response today. So, at approximately 9:30 today, it became aware to the Pittsburgh Police Department that some type of threat was communicated through the app and that there may be a potential weapon on the campus at Pittsburgh High School. Acting out of an abundance of caution, it was immediately discovered that we needed to put the school into lockdown. This was not a drill. And I can imagine the heightened alarm and, and just the anxiety that you were going through today must have been horrific. Because we've all seen the scary stories across the country, the Lavaldi Texases and all the horrific instances that happened at public schools across this country. And I can't imagine being in your classroom at that given time, wondering if this was an Alice drill, is this a lockdown drill, what is going on? However, that being said, we're very fortunate, and I'm joined this evening by my school resource officer at Pittsburgh High School, Officer Penetti. We're very fortunate that we did go into lockdown. Media communication between the Pittsburgh Public School Administration and the police department happened immediately. The lines of communication were open. And that's when we started detailing, outlining our response. Officer Penetti was on scene. He witnessed firsthand how well the school went down into lockdown. Now, is there room for improvement? Absolutely. There's always, always room for improvement. When it comes to the safety of our children, 100% is not good enough. 110%, 120%, that's what we have to achieve for. However, I can say after being briefed earlier today by Officer Penetti and my command staff, a lot of things went well today. We got out of this incident today. No one was injured. It was a great learning experience to reflect on what we can do better as a community, to make sure our children are safe. So, we went into lockdown. Immediately investigation started happening. My department, my detectives, we were correlating all of our information, stuff that's happening throughout the city. And it was determined that we had to keep it in lockdown for the short period that happened. We were able to identify two students that were not in the classrooms. And after further investigation, those two students were identified. And because of the threat, edged weapons were discovered. And those two children were, were taken into custody and brought back to the police department. That's when we really started going to work on this and looking at our response and what, what we can do better. First thing that came to mind, because of the app, there was mention of other weapons. We had already disrupted the school for the day, and we wanted to get some normality back to the school. So, I, I conferred with the superintendent. And I asked him, I made a suggestion that I bring in canines after school, canines that are specifically trained to detect ballistics. And I said, "Let's utilize this as an opportunity, number one, for a training exercise for these canines, but to rest assured that there was nothing in that building that could harm someone." We didn't have that information available this morning, but we took those steps this afternoon. This afternoon, we sent numerous canines to the building after hours with, with no student body in place. And we conducted a search and we determined to the best of our ability, using the canines, that nothing was in the school of, of that nature. Now, moving forward, I think it's important for the school committee to understand, as I said earlier, I'm in constant communication with the superintendent. This past week, I met with, with Mr., with Jeremy. We're discussing ongoing upgrades to our security throughout the district. We will continue to monitor that. We're very fortunate that I'm able to provide full-time SROs at our high school, at both of our middle schools. To have that type of on-scene capability is extremely important. But I felt it was important here tonight to address not only the school committee, but those watching from home, to let them know that first and foremost, the security of your students, your family members, is my number one priority. And I will do everything in my power to make sure that school is a safe haven. So, I really thank Mr. Gall. You really, you hit home tonight. Very impressed, very, very impressive what, what your comments were. I take that to heart. We will continue a conversation with the superintendent's office, working with Mr. Roach, and we will find any best techniques that we can do. There's discussion about cell phones. I think it's worth having a discussion. There's different opinions on cellphone use in schools. Today's technology, keep in mind, is a double-edged sword. Misinformation can be as bad or even worse than true information. My first page this morning was an active shooter at Pittsburgh High. Imagine that. I mean, I, I mean, the blue lights went on immediately. And that was disinformation, because it wasn't an active shooter at that point. It never turned into that. But that is the misinformation that came so quickly to my attention. So, how we disseminate information is important. You know, as a parent, I think we have a priority and a responsibility to keep our parents informed the best we can, to give them real-time information as quickly as we can. That's where we're working together with the school department, with Mr. Jokler's team, that we can continue to do that, to try to get real information out as quickly as possible. But I caution you, there's only so much information I can give when, when a, a serious incident is happening. But I think it's important that we get some information out. To report no information is wrong. To provide some information, the best of our ability, is, we, we have a responsibility to do that. So, unless, I'd be open to any questions from the school committee. If I can answer them, I will. I caution the committee, I will not talk about an ongoing case. I will not talk about the two students that were taken into custody. I will not talk about that. But I would be happy to answer any questions this body may have of me, or, or of my school resource officer. And I'm, I'm happy to be joined tonight by, by the principal at Pittsburgh High School. Mr. Chair, is that-
That's fine. Thank you, Chief. Dr. Knight?
Yes. Thank you so much, Chief Martino, for, you know, those words. But there's something I want to repeat. There's no question. I just want to repeat something that you said. You said a lot of things, but one particular statement, you said that the safety of the students in the Pittsburgh Public School should be 110% or 120% your number one priority. And that is the way it should be. Our students should have, should be in an environment that is safe, and that is very important. Safety is first. And I thank you so much for stating that.
As I stated, 100% is not good enough. We've seen horrific acts across this country. And 100% is not enough. I continue to look for opportunities for training with my personnel, dual training with the Pittsburgh Fire Department, extensive training with Superintendent Jokler and his team. This is my number one priority. Now, I am tasked with providing safety and security to 42,000 residents. Quite frankly, our most valuable residents are the ones in our public schools, because they're the future of our community. And I'm committed to that, Dr. Knight, that we will do everything in our power to make sure that they're safe.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Gall?
I have just one question. It doesn't pertain to the case exactly, but it does pertain to, what are your new changes to the security of our schools? That you alluded to the fact that you were introducing new technology or something?
Sure. I, I don't want to speak prematurely about it, but I will speak, I will touch a little bit about it, as I, I had a meeting this week with Mr. Roach. And, and, you know, we look at security in a couple of different fashions. But to start with, one of the easiest things to correct is the hardening of our facilities. And really looking at our facilities, I believe there's over 50 or 60 doors located at Pittsburgh High School. You know, our priority is to make sure that those doors are secure. Because we see what's, what, we see what, what has transpired in other parts of the country. You know, where something bad happens and where that stems from with. And it's usually one of those doors. So, every year, and, and more so this year, we're really stepping up our conversation on providing additional hardening of our facility. And, and some of it, you know, is going to take technology. We're looking at improving all of our camera systems throughout our school district. But like I said, we're, we're at the early stages discussing with, with, with Mr. Jokler's team, Superintendent Jokler's team. But those are areas that, that we can address immediately. You know, some of it is going to be training, education, you know, making sure staff are aware of what's happening. But some of it just, you know, you, you open a door and you forget about it. So, we're looking at potentially, you know, having an alarm response if a door is left open for a certain amount of time. We're trying to find the best technology available to work in our advantage in our public schools. We brought in the teacher, we brought in the locking door devices up at Pittsburgh High. That was a piece of technology that we discussed at length with the school department. And we thought it was a good tool to bring to the high school. We saw that today, that Officer Penetti will attest to that, the majority of the high school was able to utilize that device and create a secure environment in a classroom. Now, I can't imagine the stress level what you were dealing with in that environment. But I know for a fact that that door, door was locked. And my entire department was responding to provide some type of response to the situation. So, we're constantly evaluating best practices, what we can bring. And, and between the police department and the school department, we're going to bring those best practices to your school district.
Yeah. Thank you very much. Just one note on the doors is, there is a rule on the doors that just got introduced very recently, that I, that I was alluding to reasonable ways of protecting our students. I think that that is quite, quite explicitly one, as you're saying. I, I'm totally in favor of everything that you're doing. Thank you so much for keeping me and my peers safe. And thank you so much for handling the situation very well, Officer Martino.
You're welcome.
Mr. Horgan? Just briefly, I just wanted to thank you for your comments. Your words were straightforward and decisive. And I hope the entire city shares my feeling of ease and confidence that that gives me and that the response, you know, gives me. Just to repeat another thing that you said, the bottom line is that we set up a system, a response system that worked today. We had an anonymous complaint system that was set up. An anonymous complaint was put in, decisive action was taken, and the threat was subdued. And, you know, I think that is just the bottom line here tonight. Like you said, continued vigilance is going to continue to happen. And we're going to continue to innovate in, in student safety and continue to push this issue at, at the forefront where it belongs. But the bottom line is that the response today was well organized and decisive. And I'm sure for the, for the new principal, for the SRO, this was a hard day, but, you know, one that was, was successful. So, that's really great. And, and thank you all. Thank you, all three of you.
You're welcome. And just to reiterate, I, I understand that there's been a level of frustration that's come to my attention, things that may, we could have done better. And, and I look at those levels of frustration as learning moments, that I really can take them to heart and understand what we can do better. Because make no mistake about it, let's not say if another incident, the world we live in today, we have to be prepared each and every day for an incident to happen. So, it came to my attention, the different frustration levels from certain people in our school community came to my attention. And I take that serious. And I like listening to that, because that's how I can improve. That's how our response, that's how the district can improve. And, and I appreciate that type of response after the incident. So, you know, we're going to continue to evolve from this. Overall, you know, today's response, I am extremely grateful that we were able to bring it to a good resolution today. That being said, after review, and I'm going to sit down with my commanders tomorrow, and really after action is, what can we do better? Because we got to continue to evolve to get better. And, and just, because, because we know what's at stake. It's the future of our community. That's what's at stake.
Peter? Thank you, Chief. Today I was, I had to go to the high school to pick up a student. And that was early on. And it was well-run. There was security around the building. And the students were dismissed in an orderly fashion. I had my granddaughter in my car, and she was able to talk to her mother. And her mother was satisfied. Everything was good. And I also like to also thank the Pittsburgh Police Department, Chief Martino, Chief and Officer Penetti, their Pittsburgh graduates. A lot of our, our officers are Pittsburgh graduates and Pittsburgh residents. They have children in the system. And over my 35 years in the schools, and 31 as a principal administrator, I could always count on the police department to come in and help out at any time. And so, thank you, Chief. It's well, for your well-run department. Thank you.
You're welcome. And one other thing, for those viewing at home that may be watching this, if you have concerns, please contact my office. My door is always open. I'd be happy to sit down and listen to your individual concerns. I appreciate, Mr. Gall, your concerns. If we're going to achieve that 120%, it's important that we listen to those concerns and try to get to that 120% of, of safety and security. So, for those that are at home watching this, and, and your child or loved one may have been involved in today's event at the high school. I have a full-time staff that oversees all of our school resource officers. I'm very fortunate to have Lieutenant Jeff Howe as our, as our commander of our school resource officers. And, and quite frankly, we have some of the best-trained SROs in the Commonwealth. So, if you have concerns, please reach out to my office, send me an email. My email is on the Pittsburgh webpage. I will respond to any and all emails. And we, we need to do this together. It's not the police, it, it's the community. It's, we're one, if we're going to provide a safe, secure environment, we have to attack it as a team and look for the best solutions.
Ms. Reynolds?
One question for you. You said that the, the technology that previously we procured worked today. So, that was satisfying. And somebody's, how, how does that happen? Does it appear at the police department and at the head, at the principal's office at the same time, some person?
Would you be comfortable talking about our Stop app?
Yeah.
I'm going to let the principal give you an explanation of what the Stop app is.
So, we have a, an app called the Stop It app that you can get on any cell, cellular device, as well as like your Chromebook or computer. There's a specific code for Pittsburgh High. So, parents, students, teachers, it could be anybody, can anonymously report anything. It could be bullying, it could be theft, it could be an incident like today. So, as, immediately as somebody submits the information, it just says, "Who is it about? Where is it?" You can type some details. You can upload pictures, which is very helpful with students now on Snapchat or other devices. You can upload videos or photos. As soon as that's, as soon as it's submitted, it immediately goes to administration, it goes to central office, it goes to the police department. So, this morning, right away, as soon as it came up, we were able to answer it in real time, both the police and administration to see that threat.
So, it's simultaneous?
Yes, immediately. And the great thing about that is it's available on weekends, it's available on summer, in summertime. So, sometimes when students are concerned about another student's safety, mental health, suicidal thoughts, we are able to get that immediately. And the police department is able to get notified immediately to check on student safety. We've had a number of parents and students already this year. This has not been our first time that something has been reported. So, this is a huge resource that is very important for us to get that information. And it allows students to be anonymous, that don't want to be telling on somebody else. For parents that maybe they don't want their name to be out there either, but we're able to get that information immediately. And like the officer said, as soon as it came through, the police saw it, I saw it, we immediately got the names and were able to, to look for those students.
So, you can see how we utilize technology to our advantage. The, the specific app I'm speaking about this evening was part of larger grant that the police department applied for a couple of years ago, the door cleaning devices. So, we continue to look for technology that will only help us as we try to provide safer environments within our schools. And we're going to continue to look for that type of technology. As I said earlier, you know, technology can be a double-edged sword. We see the advantages of having the ability for the entire school, school body and their parents to have that app on their hand and, and give us a notification, even if anonymous, if they want to. But misinformation can be just as dangerous when it goes out, because with the misinformation, the, the last thing you want at a real tragic school event is thousands of people conveying upon that. Because seconds are precious. Seconds are precious on any type of school response. And that's how we train, that we have to take immediate action. And, and I'm sure the committee is aware of what I'm referring to. Seconds are precious. And we can't, one of the dangers is having that misinformation go out there, that we may take a left when we should have been taking a right. Once again, I assure you that we are doing everything to make sure our children are safe.
Mr. Hughes?
Thank you. President Jarrett and Chief and Superintendent, I want to personally thank you for taking this serious, for taking this incident serious. Because so many times in the community, I hear people say, "Oh, kids just being kids." You know what I mean? They're just silly and things like that. But I want to say today, personally, I want to personally thank all of you for taking this incident serious. And as we can see, because you did take it serious and because you took the necessary steps, you know, your cell officer, Penetti, and your, your staff- you know, yourself, Officer Panetti, and your staff, you guys did a phenomenal job. I wasn't there, but I heard, it was almost real time, you know. Principal Jarrett did this, the chief did this, the police is doing this, they're doing this. So, I was very satisfied that things were being taken care of, they needed to be taken care of, and I appreciate you reassuring the community, that the police department, the school department is doing everything they can to keep the kids safe. So, I really, really appreciate that, and I really want to say thank you for that.
You're welcome, sir.
Any further questions?
So, first of all, I want to thank Chief Martino, Officer Panetti, and Principal Jarrett for acting proactively today and making the right moves to ensure student and staff safety. That is our number-one priority every day that we're in school or when we're not in school, as Mr. Jarrett talked about how during the summertime, the StopIt app helps us identify students at risk. I just want to share with the community some actions that we took today and also in the coming days. We did have a principal's meeting at the end of the day. Wednesday is a half-day professional development day. During that day, each of the school's principals will be giving a primary reminder of student and staff safety recommendations, whether it be Alice or exiting protocols. So, that will be top of agenda Wednesday. Also, you know, one of the things that we have in Fitchburg is we do have a number of new staff throughout the schools. I believe at Fitchburg High, we have over 30 new staff members. So, to make sure whether you're existing staff member or you're a new staff member, you know the protocols and you know how those door locket systems work. So, that's key across the district, and we also have those new door locks at Memorial too. One of the things that we identified during the summer, looking ahead to this school year, was a creation of school safety teams. Mr. Roach is working closely with the school principals to identify teams that include students, staff, and parents. So, we will be convening meetings, I believe, this month.
September 27th, in fact. The first meeting is ironically, we're planning that a little bit earlier, so we will be looking for community involvement in that, especially parents of students in any of the schools and students in middle school or high school. So, that would be great. So, communications will go out in the principal's memos, but September 27, 3:30 tentatively, and if it needs to be later, it will be, but it'll be virtual or in-person, so we can, you know, people can log in if they need to.
So, you know, lastly, we know today was a stressful day for students and families. And again, as the chief mentioned, we're only trying to get better every day, how we can improve our systems and our culture of safety across all our schools. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chokla.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Moving forward into the public comment section, just want to take a moment to go over how this works. You get three minutes to speak. This is not an opportunity for debate. You present your case, and then the committee will not deliberate upon it, but we certainly will record your comments, and if need be, we will discuss an executive session. But when you approach the podium, the center podium, please cite your name and address for the committee. Anyone wishing to make public comment at this time, please come up to the podium.
Hello.
Hi.
My name is Jalen Pridgen. I'm a senior at Fitchburg High School. I need to state my address. Do I need to state my address?
Yeah. Yeah.
Oh, okay. 34 Burke Terrace is my address.
Okay.
So, I just wanted to share with the committee some of my experience today. I noticed that Dr. Knight, the chief of police, had said quite a few times, and also my principal had said, that the safety of the students is really their number-one concern. But unfortunately, I didn't feel that today, because I sat in an unlocked classroom for just a little under an hour with many of my classmates, and I heard from many of my other classmates that they were sitting in unlocked classrooms, because the teachers were unable to work the locks on the doors, and I don't understand how these teachers wouldn't have been taught prior to or right when those locks were on the doors, how to use them. And my teacher even turned around and asked the class if we knew how to use the locks, and I don't, why would we know how to lock our teachers out of a classroom? We wouldn't know how to lock our teachers out of a classroom, but they should know how to lock danger out of their classroom, because our safety is supposed to be your number-one concern. So, I'm just wondering why there wasn't any training on that, and I'm also wondering why the Alice protocol, I believe that's what we use in Fitchburg Public Schools, why that was completely ignored today. My teacher had called the main office after she wasn't able to lock the door, and then after getting off the phone with the main office, she had told us that it was just a drill and that the door would be okay unlocked. And the first part of Alice is alert, and so right then and there, she failed to alert us of danger. So, we were remaining in an unsafe classroom, completely unaware of the danger that was outside of the classroom, and we were unable to protect ourselves. Those are other parts of Alice, counter and evacuate. We would not be able to counter and attack if we didn't know an attack's coming, we wouldn't be able to evacuate if we didn't know that there was a reason that we needed to evacuate. So, I decided to speak up while I was still in the classroom and alert my peers that it wasn't a drill, and I was threatened to be written up for speaking out and also for using my phone, which I was using to communicate with my parents at the time, and with my little cousin who was having a panic attack in another part of the school building. A school that claims to be present, positive, and prepared unfortunately failed to have enough security present to avoid such issues and failed to prepare their teachers in appropriate lockdown procedures. We don't want to hear that it's being looked into or that you're in the process of creating more safety measures, because we don't want to be cause for more thoughts and prayers that I'm sure you've all heard across the country. We need change in our school system immediately, or we're really just going to be another headline, I feel personally. So, thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes?
My name is Lisa Skolfield. I am a parent of four children in Fitchburg High School, three of those being in the special education program. I live at 3 Chestnut Street in Fitchburg.
Sorry.
Please speak up.
Oh, my God.
Okay. Allowing him to handle his phone first.
I'm not going to use this again.
Technology is wonderful when it works and it's horrible when it doesn't work.
We'll figure out what three minutes is.
Right. First thing is that young lady hit all the major points, because in contact with my daughter during the incident today was a lot of, there was a lot of miscommunication, there was a lot of communication that should have gone out today that did not. There were several teachers who had no idea that this was not a drill. Allow me to repeat that. There were teachers who did not know that this was an actual event. One teacher didn't find out that this was an actual event until she popped onto Facebook and checked of all places, discussing Fitchburg now. That reaction you had right there, imagine on my side when my child's safety is being depended upon, discussing Fitchburg now. The reports from students, and please listen to these students, you ask them to be able to figure out what they want to do in life at this age, but you also have a habit of dismissing them when they're trying to bring real issues to the forefront. What they went through was very real. What they went through was very, very frightening. And it is that cell phone lifeline that let us parents know what was going on, because there was no robocall from many of us from the school allowing us to know that there was an actual event going on and what to do. Parents in a panicked state or varying degrees of panic don't always have the logic to realize that calling to school during a lockdown is just going to get them a busy signal. They do not know what the protocol is in a situation of a real lockdown, whether or not to go to the school, whether or not there is a safety area or a barrier around that school that they need to stay out of to allow the police to do their job. They do not know what the protocol is to go and pick up their children after said event. There was a lot of miscommunication, and there's a lot of very frightened kids that are, well, young adults, that were looking at teachers who didn't know the Alice drill, that were trying to educate their own educators in the moment on what to do in an Alice situation. It's not really good. The other thing is afterwards, there was no instruction for parents either on how to pick up your kids or whether or not to pick up your kids. Actually, there was in one robocall, you don't need to pick up your kids, we're going to send them back to class like nothing happened. That response is not only tone deaf, considering what has been happening in our country, it is extremely insensitive, because whether or not something bad happened today, whether the end results were good, it's still a traumatic event for not only the teachers and the students, but the parents as well. When I went to pick up my kids, poor Ms. Green, and I give her as many kudos as I can, was the only one meeting parents outside the school with nothing but a walkie-talkie and a clipboard, because there were so many parents trying to call their kids out of school that the, all you got was a busy signal. And when you arrived at the school, you could not get into the school to dismiss your child via the office. So, Ms. Green was trying to accommodate parents outside the school with a walkie-talkie and a clipboard, having the parents call their kids in the class so that the kids could put the speakerphone on and Ms. Green could let the teacher know that yes, they are officially dismissed from school, you can send them out. There was a lot of things that went well today, and thank whatever higher power you pray to, that things went well today. But this is a very, very clear, there's a lot that got missed. There was a lot that could have potentially gone extremely wrong. We now have an opportunity to fix it, and we need to fix it quickly, because it's not a matter of if, it's a matter of possibly when. Today, it wasn't a gun, thank God, but it could have been. Things could have gone terribly, terribly wrong. We need to take this opportunity that we have embraced and fix it. And one way we can do that is listen to your students, because they saw where the problems were in real time. They had to deal with them in real time. Listen to them.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you so much.
How you doing? My name is Sathron Pridgen, 34 Burke Terrace. Just want to tell you about my experience today. I ended up getting a text message from my daughter saying, school's on lockdown. But at that time, she gave me the text message, I'm listening to a police scanner, and I'm hearing what's going on, and I'm like, hold on, it's not a, she's like, on the phone, that it was a drill, and it's like 9:20, because I'm looking at 9:20, a drill. I'm like, a drill? What are you talking about? So, it's on the scanner that it's not a drill. Told us it's not a drill, you know, or the teacher is unable to lock the door, barricade the door, you know, because it's not a drill, barricade the door, find a way to barricade the door, that's what I'm telling my daughter, you know? Let me get to the point. So, I go to the school, no one has no information for me at all. Asked questions, nothing. Asked, excuse me, asked this gentleman right here, questions, nothing. Asked him nicely, how come we didn't get alerts? How come no parents got alerts? I was there before a lot of other parents, but how come no parents got alerts? My point that I'm making is this. My kids, that's, they're my life, they're everything, you know? And when they go to the school, I expect teachers and whoever else to treat them the same way. A lot of these teachers and these, I don't know how, they, it's a control thing, it's not about control. Let's forget control, let's deal with the safety of these kids. Stop telling kids to do this and do that, and they're scared, they're nervous. This is traumatizing to them. You've got teachers yelling and confused, you're making the students more confused and more scared. So, something has to give, and I don't know, still don't know why, I haven't received the alert yet, because I asked this gentleman several times, how come I see, my wife received one an hour and a half later. I'm keeping her updated what's going on, and she's working at school. She works at a school, I had to let her know what's going on, she can't leave school. So, that's, to me personally, that's scary. So, I'm here just that, I don't, anything can happen, any, some kind of change, but my thing that I really want is that alert, so I can know what's going on with my child, and pretty sure that's what they want too, to know what's going on with their kids while they're at school, that's their safe haven, I'm thinking as, you know? So, I want to say, I appreciate it, thank you for listening.
Thank you for sharing that, sir.
Please.
My name is Arisilia Torres, 124 Pleasant Street. I also had a student in there, nieces, nephews, and everything. I didn't, I found out through my son that was at work that rushed out of school because supposedly there was something going on in the school, all I, he heard shooting, guns, there were so many different rumors. By the time I got to the school, it was 10:20, maybe around 11 o'clock, I'm standing out there with parents that have petrified me, I came mad. I came ready to knock down the whole door, and the teachers can tell you, the people that were out there can tell you. I came like, my daughter's getting out of there, I started banging that door down, they came out, of course, but I had to go there acting crazy to find out what was going on, because I didn't get a phone call or nothing, and then my daughter's trying to call me when I'm on my way there, and I'm just freaking out like, no, I'm going there, I had no clue that all the parents were out there, I thought I was the only one there. I didn't even know it was on lockdown, I just heard something happened in the school and they had my daughter. But my daughter said they tried calling, I didn't get a call, but that someone could have texted, she could have texted anything. I went there acting crazy, probably made it worse, I don't know, but I was freaking out. Reason being, my daughter's already been attacked several times. So, when I hear that's going on in the school, I'm nervous, because I'm at work thinking she's safe there. I made her go to school today when she didn't want to go, and then for that to happen, I'm just saying like, like he said, parents should have been alerted. I got alerted, like two, they were out there since nine something, I got there at 11, all the parents at the same time are like, now they send the alert? By that time, our kids would have been dead if something happened. And yeah, I took my kid out of the school just like the rest of the people, and I feel like kids shouldn't have went back to class. I feel they like they were traumatized, just like I was, upset, and they should have let all the kids go home, called the parents, did whatever, but that was a lot, that was just a lot. I'm still here, I don't even know what really happened until right now, because I was hearing different stories, like you guys said, Snapchat, Facebook, Instagram, people calling everywhere. This is a small town, we all know each other. How I say, streets talk. It went around so quick, and I'm still hearing different things. That's why I came here to see what's going on. I feel like what needs to be done, just like the city's always spending money on this and that and breaking up streets, we should get a metal detector for the school, just like they have everywhere else. Then you don't have to worry, because if they got knives, if they got anything that's metal, a gun, you're going to check it right there. I feel like they should come in, empty their pockets like you do when you go to court and things like that. And then you don't have to worry about kids bringing things in or taking phones from them, because this is happening and that, because I agree with the phone thing, it's a bad and a good thing, you know? But right now, if I didn't talk to my daughter on the way there, it would have been even worse when I pulled up. I was ready to like break the whole door, the glass, if I had to to get in there to get my kid, and I was beside myself, because it's my kid, and like I said, I it would have been even worse when I pulled up. I was ready to, like, break the whole door, the glass if I had to to get in there to get my kid, and I was beside myself. Because it's my kid and, like I said, I already almost lost my kid. So that was my concern, I just feel like we need a metal detector and that would like nip a lot of things in the butt. Knives, guns, all those things that are dangerous, you know? But that's all I had to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Mr. Chair, may I address one more time?
Chief.
I think it's important that I address a couple of comments I heard this evening. First of all, I give credit to everybody that came here this evening. You truly care about your kids and their safety and security. One thing I really, I want to emphasize because I heard it now through three different presenters, is the difference between a drill and the real deal. It's our goal that no one in the school, teachers, students, know when we're doing drills. Because if it's going to be effective, if we're going to go to an effective lockdown, it has to be like that. So it's our goal that when we do do lockdown drills, that it happens without any knowledge of the drills coming forth. So that, that's our, we've already planned on several lockdown drills throughout the district at all of our different schools. And when we do those lockdowns and we do those Alice drills, we want it to be instantaneous and we want the student and the staff acting on the protocols that we put forth. So we're going to continue to work on that. How we notify our students' loved ones, that's a conversation we should have with the superintendents in office and my department. But when we're doing lockdown drills, it's our goal to make sure it's the real thing. We all see, I mean, we all grew up in the world that we would do fire drills in our schools. Well, we all knew that there were drills, the fire truck would pull outside and alarm would be pulled and we would do our evacuation. In today's day and world, when we have some of these horrific events that are happening, we don't have that luxury. We have to act like that. So it's imperative that when we're doing quote-unquote "a drill", it's the real deal. But we also owe it to our parents to let them know that it is a drill after it's concluded. So, we're picking up some things here tonight and I'm grateful that I was able to be here and listening to these. But I really wanted to give you an understanding what the difference is between a drill and not a drill in what we are trying to accomplish. Thank you.
Go ahead, Peter.
Chief, should we be letting the parents know simultaneously when and not after the drill? Because once you start a drill, students are going to call their parents.
They are, they most certainly are.
They're going to call their parents, you know, I mean, I know.
It's my understanding, and we're going to have this discussion tomorrow and down the road, it's my understanding that best practices across this country when you're doing drills is you make it as real as possible, you administer the drill, and simultaneously, whatever alert system we have, we're pushing it out that a drill is happening. So at the same time...
The parents should know at the same time you're doing the drill. So the parents know it's a drill.
But the effectiveness behind that is we want the student body and the teachers to act to whatever protocols we set up. So, I mean, if we send it out simultaneously, they're texting their parents and the parents comes back, it's only a drill. So you want that first few minutes of a lockdown to be as real as it real can be. But then, I think we have a responsibility to notify the parents that this is what's happening at the school right now. So, I mean, we've done these exercises, most recently Monty Tech, and we're going to continue to try to put best practices in place for our district. But drills are extremely important. And for those to work properly, they have to come unannounced like it's the real thing happening to make sure that all the protocols are being followed, locking doors. And I hear what happened now with some doors unlocked, those are things we can fix. That's a conversation we're having and we will continue to fix that. But it will happen again that we will do a drill. But I need to make that drill as lifelike as possible so in the God forbid instance that we are responding to a real, everybody is doing what is expected of them, so.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Chief, a quick question. In terms of a situation, sort of like what happened today, who takes command?
The senior most official onsite, well, you mean from my department?
Well, is it the school that takes command or is it Officer Pranetti? Because that may have been the issue with communication, who communicates?
So initially, it's a collaboration between the police department, responding law enforcement in the school district. Quite frankly, no one knows the student body better than the teachers, the administrators. So we work very closely to them. We evaluate the threat almost instantaneously. In this case, we evaluated it like that and we determined we're going into lockdown because like I said earlier, time is of an essence. So, we work very closely. Now, if there was a legitimate threat, yes, we are taking control. If there's, we have a responsibility to find whatever threat is at that public school. Whatever the threat may be, we are trained to go right to that threat and take action on that. So, you know, in the very beginning, it's a collaboration. We work with our principals, with our school administrators because they know their, they know their student body better than anybody. But if this is not a drill, make no mistake about it. The men and women of the police department are entering and expediting and to find that threat immediately to eliminate any potential threats to our students.
I think that may be a part of the frustration in terms of the communication. You know what I mean? I'm thinking as a parent as well.
Sure.
Okay, when the police arrive onsite to a situation like that, do the school department take, you know, step back and allow the police to do their job so they can't put out information that they don't have authority to put out?
So once we get notification where we went today into lockdown, we go in and we immediately look for that threat that's been described. And once that happens, we won't turn over the authority until we're sure that there is no further threat. In this incident, it took about an hour, hour and a half. But that's the time where communication needs to happen. It's evident what I'm hearing tonight that we did have some communication disruption.
I think that's a good question that you bring up. Because in this case, we weren't sure, right? Like, we were still trying to assess if there wasn't even a weapon on school property. And I think because there wasn't an active shooter, I think that the police would have taken charge. But I think because we were still trying to identify the students and determine if they were even in the building or not, we know the students, they don't know the students. So for that reason, it took all of our admin in addition to our police. And honestly, I appreciate it, I want to give my special thanks to the police department who did an amazing job. But I would also say that our admin potentially put our life at risk today too because we all without a shadow of a doubt, didn't blink an eye, we went with each individual police officer to as many rooms as we can and put our life at risk trying to find these students that potentially could have a weapon. So because of the circumstance, right? We were all tied up, all the admin and the police were searching for these students. Which caused a lag in the communication to the parents, right? Not intentional, but it was at that moment. And I'm a parent of three kids. My number one priority is to make sure that any potential threat is stopped right then. And while I understand as a parent you want that immediate communication, I need to make sure that there's not an active shooter or anybody with a weapon in our school. So the priority was that our admin were going with the police to find those two people. And that's where maybe the difference was with the lag of communication versus if it was a different circumstance, right? The police would have taken completely over and then admin would have been able to focus like just exclusively on communication. In this circumstance, we didn't know if that person, you know, like there was no active shooting happening and we had to identify that student for them.
Thank you, Mrs. Chair. So then maybe that could be part of the ongoing conversation. Do, is there someone who's directly responsible for disseminating information? You know what I mean? Who is the PR person? Who's the, you know what I mean? Because a couple of times, we've had this situation in our district where when the community gets the information, it's already tainted. Because it comes, once it hit discussing Pittsburgh, we know what happens with that. So how do we get a leg up on that? You know what I mean? Not saying, okay, we know you guys are busy. So that should be, from the district perspective, each school district, I mean, each school should have a PR person. This is your job. They're working on this, this is your job to get information out to the community. Not to run around the school, this is your job. And I mean, that's something...
We have that. So can I just be clear? So today, there were two communications that went out. The district administration was in close contact with the principal and also with the police department to make sure that the information that we were sharing at the time we were sharing was as accurate as possible. We can't keep up with whatever is blowing up on any social media site. Okay, we just can't. We have to be accurate and we want to make sure the parents and the students know what is going on. And just as Principal Jared explained, in this case, the school admin was with the police officers working to find who or what the threat was within the building. So there was a period of time in this case where if it was an hour, that communication wasn't happening.
It's a long time to be locked in a room and not aware of what's going on.
Keep in mind, during this incident, during that one hour period, we're acting on information that came in through an app. We're acting on information that was reported on Snapchat. We're working on information that was reported on Facebook. And what we were during that initial stage was gathering intelligence, looking at names, looking at resources, reviewing what information we have at the police department to make the most informational response. So in this case, where it was an hour and I can't imagine being locked in a room for an hour not knowing, which must have seemed like all day, that was a hectic time. But that response from law enforcement in a public school was extremely important because quite frankly, we're gathering real information. Not Snapchat information, not Facebook information, and we were providing a response. Now, keep in mind folks, if this was an active shooter and there was active shooting going on, that would have been immediate. That would have been an immediate response identifying whatever threat was there.
I'm sorry, I didn't...
If you guys don't know initially what it was, then it still would have took you an hour to find out that there was, like, you know, like somebody put guns inside the school, so it still would have took you an hour unless they were actually like shooting in the school. There was still hurt, there was trauma, kids.
And I can't imagine what the student body went through today. All I can say is we need to better our communication. But in this case, it's important that our response is delivered by real information and information that we know about what is truly happening. So, once again, there's room for improvement. No one's saying there's not. And I appreciate the people that came out this evening. But I really wanted to distinguish what the difference is between a drill and not a drill. And there's no such thing as a drill. We do this each and every time like it's the real thing happening. Thank you again.
Well, I really just wanted to speak off of what the chief was saying. I can't even remember what I was going to say. The, what he was saying about how it took an hour to get that statement out. So I understand that they are responding with all of the facts that they have. But I think that there can be, where that in-between time is, responses in between where they're saying that this is happening right now, we don't necessarily have all of the facts, but, you know, this is happening right now. So our parents and us are still aware somewhat what's going on. I understand that they can't give us all that information at that time, but it's, I don't think that it is okay to have that huge gap of time between where we are just assuming something and where now we have the information. I don't think that there should be that big of a gap.
Thank you.
If I just may address some of the parents. I was actually at the school and this isn't a police drill, it's not a school drill, it's a drill for everyone. And it has to work both ways. Not just with the police and the teachers. It has to work with the teachers, the police, and the students. We all need to do our part in these drills. And when I was outside, I saw some of the parents there. And it makes our job difficult when we don't have accountability. And parents were on their phones, calling their kids, saying, "Walk out of the school right now, we don't care." And I understand it and I respect it. But then, you make our job difficult. And it's hard for myself or Principal Jared to get information out there when we're trying to control 1,300 students in the school and 100 or so parents outside the school. So, we need to get control of the situation. And I get it as a parent myself, that you want to do everything you can to help your child. But you need to trust us somewhat. There has to be a holding area where you all go. You have to tell your children to remain in the school, listen to directions because, let's say, God forbid, this was a serious issue, we don't know who's who and who's going where. So you need to work with us. Is it horrible that you were locked down for an hour? Yeah, I can't even imagine what that would feel like. But I also want you to imagine how I felt as a school resources officer going through that school. I take this job extremely personally. 1,300 plus kids. And I act like each one of them my own kids. And I do. Every student in that school belongs to me. And I take it with great pride that if something happens, it's on me. But I need your help as the students, your help as the parents, your help as the superintendent and principals, that we need to work together. Thank you.
Really briefly. He's right. A panicked parent is one of the biggest obstacles that you can have in a situation like this. But keep in mind, people of my generation, all the parents, we never had Alice drills. We are completely unfamiliar with what happens in the school during this time. You need to come up with a protocol and educate your parents on what to do in this situation. Because he's right. We're going to be the biggest hindrance and possibly cause even more danger to the student body, all with the good intentions of wanting to protect our kids. It's a natural instinct, we can't help it. It's supposed to be there. But we have to be able to work with you, with him, with the police and with the educators. But we can't do that if we don't have a clear plan on what our part as parents is supposed to be. There's no, nothing coming home saying, "In the case of, you need to stay in this area and not go in this one." "In the case of, don't try calling the school and freaking yourself out even more because you're going to get a busy signal." Because anybody who is manning that desk, by all means, if they're not searching the school, they should be keeping themselves safe. Parents need an education too when it comes to this. We are completely unfamiliar with what's going on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone wishing, anyone else wishing to speak? You know, you guys don't get two bites at the apple, but everybody is. But come on up and take another bite. Go ahead, take another bite, why not? Anybody else needs another bite?
Appreciate my bite. Yeah, there was two alerts that went out today as well. So which was confusing to a lot of people. Which one was accurate, you know what I mean? So it's real confusing. And I was one of those parents that told my child to get the hell up out of that school. And I'll do it again if there's no communication. Because number one, communication is the key element to success in life, period. If you're unable to communicate, nothing's going to get resolved, nothing's going to happen. So, just a tad bit of information would have been good. Me standing out there with all those parents, don't know what's going on and no one's telling me nothing. And I'm just going to stand here and my child's going to be in there? Give me some type of information, if not, let's go. Because you're my child, I had you, these guys didn't have you. Because when you're gone, they're not going to miss you, I'm going to miss you. You know what I mean? And that's very serious to me. So, thank you.
Thank you, let me close by saying we will, we must do better and we will do better and we'll do it soon. I can assure you of that, thank you. All right. Anyone else, dare I say, anyone else wishing to speak? Oh!
Hi, Mr. Mayor. Joshua Claus, 44 Crescent Street here in the city of Pittsburgh. I'm a little winded. I was eating dinner, watching our government at work here, watching the television. My son, I came from Leominster by the way. My husband and I have been here now officially a year. So naturally, my teenage son goes to Leominster High to finish his school career from Leominster. What bothers me is, one of the audience members mentioned today, this gets out on social media and Snapchat and... and Snapchat and Facebook. Two things I wanted to address personally. My collegiate information, I'm sure Reverend Hughes can relate, I'm also a minister, so I'm coming from a spot of empathy after a long day of work. Mr. Superintendent, with all due respect, I've never met you and I don't know you. However, what bothered me was, and I would encourage the committee to consider, there be effort. I don't care how much effort there is, but there needs to be effort to monitor social media because of misinformation, which I myself got word from my son, who was in Leominster High, what was going on. I'm also familiar with the public. These meetings can be quite boring, they don't come out until there's a problem. And I'm actually moved to see this community come out tonight, this black and brown community, this highly diverse community. And they all felt a little marginalized. So other than the superintendent's comments having me feel a little surprised, I think you need to take social media seriously. I think this committee needs to maybe look at a position, like a social media manager or someone in this department. And to the police department, I heard the response was great, but I also heard that in seen on social media myself, parents are frustrated. The lack, and I'm a parent, the lack of communication, if you can imagine, on the national scene, hello, Uvalde had an hour go by and the kids were killed. This was not an active shooter, so no doubt in my mind, having been a former cop 20 years ago, I'm sure the police department responded efficiently. However, let's not try to downplay the community that came out tonight with their concerns. It got me off my dining room table to whip down here. I live off, right off of Blossom Street, and I'm glad I made it. Because you all have a right to be upset, and the kids have a right to be scared, and I hope this body listens to all of them, not just your chief of police or your superintendent. Social media manager, what, 65 grand a year? Pay them a salary. Have them stay on top of Snapchat. These are our kids' lives. I was in Leominster when Connecticut happened, and that was terrifying, and my son was their age. And then we see Uvalde. And then not for nothing, I think we have hundreds of incidences in schools across America. Who is Pittsburgh to think that there's no possibility anything like this would happen? And teachers need to be held accountable, principals need to speak to their teachers. Who is telling the kids it's just a drill? Relax. Mr. Hughes, I don't know if you remember, we worked together at Academy Middle School years ago. We took stuff seriously, because it was a difficult school, because those kids were special. So I apologize for being passionate, but then again, to the parents, I ran out of my house for you tonight because you're doing the right thing. And to the mother who was here earlier, I don't see her, banging outside the school, especially after Uvalde, I would have been a father banging outside of Leominster High School if there was an incident. So I don't appreciate hearing the superintendent about social media. We have seen what our democracy is going through with misinformation and Snapchat and kids. There were no guns, but you know the first thing my son said to me today, and I corrected him, I said, "No, Pittsburgh didn't have any guns, honey." It was nine. So this is firsthand. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing on, moving on to the agenda, superintendent's report.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Chair. Tonight we have an update on the solar projects that we have in process at Longchamp Middle School and at Pittsburgh High School. And Mr. Roach, barring success with technology, will be presenting shortly.
Plug her in here. Cross our fingers. There it is. Very good. Yeah, so it's exciting, I think, what's happening. Oh, I think this is the wrong one, excuse me. This one right here. There's been quite a bit of work on solar projects in a number of schools, so a quick update in conjunction with Select Energy, who's helping us. So briefly, I'll describe some of where the projects are in the Pittsburgh Public Schools right now, and then next steps. So we are working with Select Energy. They're undergoing a number of steps to prepare Longchamp, Pittsburgh High School, and then Crocker Elementary School, the new building, hopefully, in making sure that those schools are equipped with state-of-the-air solar panels that will provide a great deal of energy back into the schools. So there's a number of steps there that you can see, but ultimately, the power purchase agreement, you'll hear me refer to a PPA, the Power Purchase Agreement, is gonna provide significant energy savings across the schools into the district. And Select really does all of the work. So they design it, they help to install it, they really create the communication between Unitil and the school system, the permitting, all the different things that have to happen. And it's really exciting to be at this stage now, where work has begun on Longchamp Middle School. So you see an artist's rendering there of what the panels will look like on the roofs of Longchamp Middle School, the target, so that recently begun. About two weeks ago, the project began in earnest, and the target completion date is October 31st of this year, so that's great. It's not a long-range project. The Power Purchase Agreement will commence following a permission to operate. So those, PTO is another acronym, Unitil has to provide that. It's pretty standard procedure, and really ultimately, this system at Longchamp will provide 94% of the electricity consumption at that site. So what does that equate to in savings to the school, to the Pittsburgh Public Schools? $17,000 in the first year, and then $512,000 is the very detailed estimate over the 20-year power purchase agreement. So that's Longchamp. That one is in process now, as said, you know, it should be completed by the end of October, and hopefully the PTO is executed within, you know, the next few weeks, and then the switch is made and we're on solar at Longchamp, which is really exciting. Pittsburgh High School's project will look a little different, but it'll be a solar canopy in the parking lots. That one is planned, ultimately, the goal is to start in July. The letter of intent has been signed, the SMART, which is Solar Massachusetts Renewable Targets Incentives, have been applied for and received, will be received. The interconnection agreement between, you know, this project and Unitil is pending, and then Select is preparing that power purchase agreement and lease for review. This system provides 48% of Pittsburgh High School's consumption, but given the size of it, and that there will be escalating savings over the 25-year PPA, the first year savings will be $13,500, but they expect 2.1 million over the 25-year power purchase agreement. There is a secondary plan in place to do the roof at Pittsburgh High School as well a little bit later on. That would then provide up to, similar to Longchamp, 96% of electricity consumption at that site. The Crocker Solar Project for the new Crocker Elementary School, of course, which are in plans, are in the process right now with the design team from the architects, in addition to, you know, Select. They're confirming the savings estimate, so those aren't available right now. The letter of intent is happening, the SMART incentives are next steps there, as well as applying to Unitil for an international solar alliance incentive, again, then followed up with the PPA and lease. That system will provide 65% of the consumption, and the estimates will be comparable in expectation to what you saw with Longchamp and Pittsburgh High School. So where are they now, you know, where are we with respect to the next steps? Ultimately, it's securing those incentives, maximizing the savings for FHS and Crocker, and so Select is working with us weekly, really, you know, in terms of helping us with the letters of intent, with those SMART, you know, energy incentives, they do have to be submitted through the Department of Energy Resources. Those next steps then turn into the site feasibility, so canopies seem pretty straightforward. I'll show a couple images of what those would look like, but they do have to conduct the engineering around that and engage the planning board. And then with Crocker Elementary School, just making sure that the new building would have the structural feasibility for solar panels, which, where it will be a new building, it would. That would be a ballasted system, and again, there's an image here in the next slide, I believe. And then the PPA and lease agreements really ultimately are the last steps right before, you know, that PTO, that permission to operate that Unitil would give, and then it's literally flipping the switch, and the building is gaining energy from the sun, so, you know, it's really pretty exciting. Couple images here, you see some roof projects like Stone Hill, those are ballasted, meaning they're off of the roof. You see the canopy one from Upper Cape Cod Tech. We saw one recently from South Community High School as well, very similar to that. And then Salem State University has some of the solar panels that rest directly on a roof. So, you know, our representative that we work most closely with is Byron Woodman. His information is here, certainly I'm communicating with him frequently, but if anybody would like to ask questions, certainly that's his email and his direct line, and he's very responsive. So that's a quick update, certainly glad to take any questions at this time.
Ms. Reynolds.
You mentioned Unitil International. Why is Unitil International involved?
Well, it's an international service, so it's an international service agreement that, or solar agreement, I'm sorry, that looks at, that's part of the incentive process, that just has, there has to be applications made around some of these energy incentives to ensure that the project meets certain criteria, that it's gonna produce a certain amount of electricity with the square footage of the panels and the different types of panels that are gonna be used. So what Select does for us is expert, as experts in that field, they kind of navigate all of those different ways that the school system and the schools can receive the best benefits and the best incentives possibly. International Solar Alliance, I think it is, I'm sorry, I said agreement before, is just one of those types of incentive programs, like the SMART one that Massachusetts does.
Do you know what other nation is involved?
As far as I know, it's 30 that are part of that. I can get the list and submit them after, for sure. But as I recall reading about that, there were 30 nations that were, that were part of that.
I would like to see that. And what about the batteries, the expense of the batteries that are involved?
I can certainly reach out to Byron about that and report back. I don't know specifically.
Right. And what about acts of God that should happen? Those are questions that, I was speaking with a person who knew far more than I did, and I was eager to put his thoughts down there. Those are questions that he had that...
Yeah, they would update the system as needed. So Select would...
They being who?
Meaning Select Energy.
Select Energy?
Would replace a malfunctioning panel.
What if Select Energy goes out of business?
I'm sure there's certain, you know, contingencies that would be available for that, certainly that are part of...
Could you check on what they are, contingencies there are?
Absolutely.
And I was just alerted with the difficulties that there are in supplies, getting supplies, I'm hearing it most frequently with car repairs or car purchases of new cars, long months of delay. What is the likelihood of getting needed supplies to repair any of these things?
My understanding is the timeline on something like that is pretty efficient. I mean, looking at the Longchamp project, for example, it's been right on time with what they estimated.
Okay, thank you.
No problem. So just to summarize, I'll find out about the ISA alliance and how many, you know, what the countries are, and then we'll ask him about the batteries.
Just to go to the root of it, would we be dependent on another nation to supply our schools?
No, no. It'd be the sun. Really, that's the goal. I mean, to not be reliant on another nation and to be reliant on the thing that we're pretty confident will be there every day.
Any further questions?
Okay. Thank you. So next up, we have an update on our strategic plan that the school committee approved at the end of last year. Last year was a busy year in terms of working on the strategic plan, and now we're going into the implementation phase. So Mr. Thompson is hooking up his laptop now.
Hopefully it'll work this time.
And we just might have to, he has it resting on his cell phone, which is...
Here we go. Okay, here we go. Gonna start.
So actually, well, just again, starting off with our theory of action, which is the basis for our strategic plan, if all staff, families, and community partners collaboratively identify and remove barriers to personal growth and achievement, then every student will be ready to learn and access high-quality construction and social-emotional support. Basically, the premise for this, and boiling it down to something simple that everyone can remember, is all means all here. Again, we've shared the vision during the strategic planning process, and I think, given the nature of time, if we can just move on, if that's okay with the chair, some of this is just going back to our core values, this is something that we share out all the time, in terms of being growth-focused, vulnerable, trustworthy, adaptable, and collaborative. And again, tonight, you're going to hear an update on, we have six commitments that were included in the strategic plan. These I will just list in summary or go through in summary. One is a curriculum that's accessible to and reflective of all students, a district-wide tier system of academic and social-emotional support, staff development, and a diverse recruitment plan, strategic and effective use of all resources, that's in addition to financial, that's staffing and facilities as well, a sense of welcoming and belonging with students, parents, staff, and all members of the community, and community and stakeholder So, Mr. Thompson has, instead of going through all the items one by one here, Mr. Thompson will provide a summary of each of these commitments here.
So I will provide to you all a high-level summary, and I will share this PowerPoint with all of you later, and it'll be posted on our website and social media. If there's any questions after, I'll be more than happy to sit and discuss them. So I'm gonna give a high-level summary of our strategies and our actions. So our first commitment is curriculum that is accessible to and reflective of all our students. So our three strategies that are involved with this commitment involve, strategy one, looking at our data and making sure that we have clear data cycles established in our schools, routines in our schools around looking at data, and also a data literacy of our staff in Pittsburgh. Our second strategy focuses on the instructional framework, really meaning that all means all, all students, all the time, and that we're providing best quality tier-one instruction for all our students. And then strategy three is looking at our district curriculum and accommodation plan, our D cap, and going back and revisiting that and revising that based on the needs of our students. So that's a summary of our commitment number one. So these actions that are aligned to this will all be completed by November. Commitment number two, a district-wide tiered system of academic and social-emotional support. Strategy one is looking at our most recent MCAS data, which will be out at the end of September publicly, and looking at that data and establishing goals for all our aggregate and subgroups of students in Pittsburgh. Our second strategy, we've talked a lot about our co-teaching initiative. Our second strategy, we've talked a lot about our co-teaching initiative and making sure that our co-teaching initiative is happening in all our schools for our English language learners, in addition to our special education students. And then our third strategy for commitment number two is making sure that all schools have a clear school-wide instructional focus and also have evidence-based learning practices that align to that instructional focus and to make sure that all teachers know that and that we are on the classrooms, making sure that these are being implemented in our schools and in our classrooms. So strategy number, I mean, sorry, commitment number three is staff development and a diverse recruitment plan. So strategy number one is to make sure we are providing professional development based on our staff needs and putting out a professional development catalog to meet their needs. Strategy number two is establishing a teacher leadership academy to actually continue to build the capacity of our staff within the district. Strategy number three is the recruitment of diverse staff to meet the needs and to look like our, our students that we are educating. And then strategy number four is making sure that we are providing a mentoring program that is based on the needs of, of our staff, that allows us to keep our staff here in Fitchburg and not look elsewhere.
And I think just, Mr. Thompson, to emphasize that we have made a considerable investment in all of these, and these are underway. The Teacher Leadership Academy is beginning next month. Also, next month, we may have TNTP, who completed the talent landscape analysis, present to either the full school committee or the personnel subcommittee of the school committee, their research and their findings, recommendations, and the team that we've assembled working on that. And again, the mentoring program has been revamped to address and help the new teachers have the, you know, getting acclimated to Fitchburg Public Schools and also to make sure that they'll be successful and stay at Fitchburg Public Schools.
I'm sorry, I'm moving fast. If you have any questions, please stop me. Commitment number four is strategic and effective use of all resources. The first strategy for this commitment is to make sure that we have a system, structure and protocol in place to verify requests and to make sure that all the requests actually align to our district improvement team, district improvement plan, in addition to our school improvement plans. Strategy number two is to make sure we are optimizing all our resources that we have for our students. And then strategy number three for commitment number four is to develop a system to actually monitor the impact of the resources that we're using and make sure that these resources that we're putting in place are actually getting outcomes for our students. Commitment number five is a sense of- See, I spoke too soon. Commitment number five is a sense of welcoming and belonging with students, parents, staff and all members of the community. We have one strategy underneath commitment number five, and that's to really develop a comprehensive campaign to inform and engage all stakeholders in the conversation around transformation with a focus on diversity, equity, inclusivity and belonging for all. And then last but not least, last, the commitment number six is community and stakeholder engagement. This strategy, commitment for, for strategy one for this commitment, we're aligning our partnerships and services and just making sure that we are getting our community's impact by forming focus groups and hearing our community's, you know, community's voice and hearing what they are asking for, in addition to make sure that we're doing a good job of also communicating information out to them. And then our last strategy for this is making sure that we strengthen the tiered system of support by funneling more supports to our school communities or our schools that need it the most. So again, this is a very high-level overview of our commitments, in addition to the strategies and actions involved in them. So we will be coming back in around December, January to actually update you on the strategies I just talked to you about and to let you know the progress on those. And then we'll be coming back to you with our second quarter action steps, which involve these commitments and what those will look like. So we'll share those out with you again later on this year.
Any questions, comments?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Thompson. I heard a lot of nice things said, but it just seemed, and I'm not, please don't misinterpret my words, but it just seemed like a lot of these commitments have, has been made before using different vocabulary, you know, like saying, this is what I'm, we are going to do, this is what we are committed to do, and then these things really don't happen. So my question is, again, with all due respect, well, let me just add in that, are there any guarantees that this is going to take place this time? You know, I hear a lot of people saying, are we going to do this, we're going to do that, but then it's never done. You know, are there any guarantees that these things? Remember, we are talking about the students of Fitchburg, which are very important. They're going to be the men and women of tomorrow. They get priority. They are more important than all the other things that, you know, that we could put on the plans, the students first. We need to see that the academic achievement gap is being closed. We need to do those things that are going to help the students to improve academically, socially, emotionally and so forth. Are there any guarantees that these things are going to happen this time?
Well, I, I'll answer that question, Dr. Knight.
Thank you, sir.
We are committed to making sure all our students in Fitchburg grow and achieve and that we eliminate any achievement or, and/or opportunity gaps that our students may have. So this year, with the 51 new positions that were approved in the budget, funded by the $7 million in Student Opportunity Act funding, plus the S R Resources, we are finally, after years of advocating, in a position where we can deliver on these commitments. So over the last two years, we've been working during a pandemic to make sure that we have the infrastructure, staffing and systems to be successful as we emerge from, from the pandemic to an endemic, but making sure our students, like Tia, Frank and the 5,500 others, all have the best possible opportunities when they graduate Fitchburg High or Goodrich Academy.
They deserve it, sir.
Absolutely. May I?
Thank you.
And also, Dr. Knight, this is why we put this checkpoint in there, because we're going to come back in December and January and go back and review these and actually show you and tell you exactly what we accomplished. And based on what we accomplished, identify what the next steps are. So this system of kind of a plan, do, study, act piece, we're going to be putting these, you know, things in place and coming back here and reporting on them, so giving you that opportunity to actually see the, you know, the work that we're doing and the outcomes.
Beautiful, just want the best for the students.
Yep, absolutely. We all do.
I, I agree, I, I agree with Dr. Knight. We're going to put these programs in place and we're going to work at it, and we're going to teach, and not all are going to learn, you know, not all are going to, like today, I had a good experience at the high school. Not every parent had a good experience, and I think all we can do is just keep trying and keep teaching what superintendent is proposing. Just keep pounding away at it and continuing to do the best job we can and make changes where we need to make changes. Tonight, I really bothered, one of the things that really bothered me tonight, when I listened to a young woman say she was having a hard time trying to reach out to a, a person, and they're telling, if you don't do what I want you to do, I'm going to write you up, you know? That isn't putting water on the flame, that's like throwing gasoline on the flame. And, but those are the people we need to get through to help those young people with the social and emotional issues, so all we can do.
And public relations need to be improved, public relations.
Ms. Reynolds?
You still got the ball, huh? You're fine.
Here's the chair, thanks.
I'd just like to speak in broad terms and say that I feel like we're wandering away from excellent academics and putting out the word or the, or the expectation that each, each student and each, each teacher is going to be a semi-psychologist. And I, I think we should let them teach the, the subjects, and when we find out that we're exceeding in math. And, and also, I, I'm sure that you all know that many of these words are coded words for other things that much of the public objects to. And that has to be worked through and, and flushed out so that we are all on the same page. I assume that you understand what I'm speaking of. Well, I, I could tell you, for example, diversity. And when you interview a person, I, I was watching a video that says, well, we ask certain questions, and if they don't, they're, they're addressed in such a way that if we don't get the answer that we desire, we will not hire that person. But it never comes out that, you know, you're a conservative or you're a liberal or there's ideologies running rampant in the country and turning things all over, and we're all talking nice talk, but there's a lot of devastation. And I think undermining, cutting the kids off at the knees when they should be have, they should have childhood and play and be safe and learn their math and learn to be excellent readers. I think we're wandering, and I'd like to see us get back to a solid, what I consider solid teaching of subject matter and not expectation that each one of us can deliver all of the answers on every subject in the teaching profession. Thank you. Well, I just, I did want to reiterate, you said I, I could come through and, and see your full presentation at the-
Yes, yep. This will be mailed out to you tonight, tomorrow, excuse me, by Amelia Alexandra, so you'll have this.
Yeah.
Next, next item on the agenda is we have a out-of-state field trip. The Fitchburg High School volleyball team would like to go see a couple of games at Keene State College, and as this is an out-of-state field trip, the school committee needs to provide approval, and that's listed as an action item on the agenda tonight. So having said that, we have a few budget items to quickly go over, some grants to accept, submit, and then Mr. Roach.
Yeah, there are several grants, one to submit, which is the Project Bread for $6,500, and that grant aims to foster community engagement as an avenue to address barriers to implementing and utilizing safety net programs such as SNAP or WIC and school meals, for example, and dismantle the stigma of food insecurity with unique community-driven solutions. There's one grant to accept, which is the Fiscal Year 23 SEL and Mental Health Grant of $127,500, which will be supporting student social, emotional learning, behavioral and mental health and wellness through multi-tiered systems of support. You did hear about two donations as well. They were both for backpacks, thanks to J.R. Glass, which donated 75 backpacks valued at $2,625. These would be distributed to students in need. And thank you also to City United Church, which donated 101 backpacks valued at $3,535, again, to be distributed to students in need. I can continue on the additional items, if that's appropriate.
Who is City United Church?
I, I'm not sure exactly. This donation was processed through Eva Kelly.
The Moonibur?
Yeah.
I've never heard of it. Oh, the old Twin City, okay. Yeah. I, I did the math and it's $35 a pack, a backpack.
Yeah, they're nice backpacks, definitely.
Good.
Okay, continue.
Okay.
Yeah, okay, so in addition, there are several other items related to adjustment to, to substitute teacher pay. You heard a little bit about that from Mr. Stevens, and that proposal is to increase substitute teacher pay to become more competitive in the market and to provide classroom support when teachers are absent. In addition, in addition, I know Superintendent Jokla will describe the Crocker Elementary School MSBA project.
Thank you, Mr. Roach. So Wednesday night, the city council as a whole will be voting on a loan order for $76.65 million for the new Crocker Elementary School, which is an MSBA-funded program. And on tonight's agenda under budget items and under action items is a vote that you will be taking to commit $5 million of school choice funds, which will be available by June 2025 to apply towards the $76,650,000 estimated project cost. So I just wanted to mention that, and from the resource subcommittee meeting, Mr. Stevens gave a summary of, at that meeting, the resource subcommittee approved that $5 million commitment or voted to bring it forward to the full school committee for a vote. So on Wednesday, then, the city council will see that the school committee is committed to helping out with the total net city project cost.
I, I want to take this opportunity to thank the, thank the superintendent and certainly his staff, Mr. Roach as well, and that's a, that's a very, a very, very generous commitment. I mean, we're being, we're being subjected to inflationary increases that are, in some cases, approaching 20%. So that $76 million figure wasn't that a year ago. So this 5,000, this 5 million is very much needed. We believe that what we're presenting on Wednesday is a elegant and appropriate way to address both Crocker and Fitchburg Public Library, two projects I believe that the, the people of the city of Fitchburg deserve and, and, and want. So hopefully, the, hopefully, Ward, the councilors on Wednesday will agree and vote for the, for the plan that we're going to propose. Thank you.
Are we going to be taking these items separately?
If you wish, we're, we're going to table 22-198. But we, we, I mean, it's, it's whatever your pleasure is. You want to bundle or you want to take them individually? It's-
Well, I would like to take one out there that, and I don't recall, I'm trying to read this, and I've read it many, many times.
Yeah.
Where, one of, one of the grants I wouldn't be for.
Which one is it?
I know, I'm trying to locate it.
Oh, you're looking for it, okay.
Yeah.
Well, in that case, why don't we just do them one by one? In that case, why don't we just do it one by one and-
One by, okay, fine, fine. All right, so action items, action item 22-189, approve the superintendent's recommendation to allow FHS-
Motion to approve.
Motion made.
Second.
Seconded to approve 22-189. All in favor?
Aye.
He's unanimous. 22-190, approve the superintendent's proposal to utilize 5 million of school choice funds to partially support the $76.65 million Crocker Elementary.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve 22-190. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, it is unanimous, thank you. 22-191, approve the superintendent's proposal to increase the substitute teacher pay to become more competitive in the market, provide classroom support when teachers are absent.
A motion to approve.
Do we have a number there of what, what you want to increase it to?
Go ahead, Peter.
110.
110 a day?
From 95 to 110.
Okay, thank you.
Boy, it's come a long way since I was a substitute. Because that was about 40 years ago. Yeah, I think it was, I think it was like $45 a day, something like that, 40 bucks.
Inflation.
Yeah, I guess, well, that was about 25 years ago, too.
When I started, $95 was my weekly pay.
Yeah, right, yeah, yeah. Okay. Did we vote on that?
No, the, the motion was made by Mr. Stevens.
Motion made to approve 22-191.
Second.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, he's unanimous. 22-192, approve the superintendent's recommendation to accept the following grant title, FY23, I don't know what that is, SEL and MH grant, $127,500.
Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Motion made, seconded to approve 22-192, all in favor? Motion made, seconded to approve 22-192. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you.
No, it's not unanimous.
Yes.
That's the one I was looking for.
Oh, that's the one you were looking for?
Yep.
You, what, what, what's your, you wish it was, you voted no?
To oppose.
You voted no, okay.
To oppose.
All right. To in opposition.
Four in favor.
Four in favor. It passes. 22-193, approve the superintendent's recommendation to submit the following grants title, Project Bread.
Motion to approve.
Motion made. Seconded to approve 22-193. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It is unanimous. 22-194, approve the donation of $2,625.75 backpacks to be distributed to our students in need from J&R Glass Services Incorporated, 86 Water, 860 Water Street. Motion made.
Seconded.
And seconded to approve 22-194. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? None. 22-195, approve the donation of $3,535 from 101 backpacks to be distributed to our students in need from City United Church.
Motion to approve.
Motion made. And seconded to approve.
Just have one, one question. Are those, are there items in that backpack or is that just the physical empty backpack that costs $35 each?
So, the backpack, they did provide different items in them as well, from writing utensils and notebooks that were around. But the, the value of the backpack is what's being approved tonight.
Okay. All right. Did we vote on that?
No, there was, a motion was made and seconded.
Motion made and seconded to approve 22-195. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I believe that's unanimous. 22-196, approve the superintendent's recommendation to extend Alicia Borospy as Director of Special Ed beginning July 1, 2022, for three years, ending June 30, 2025, including a 2.5% salary adjustment for school year '23. Motion made and seconded to approve 22-186. All in favor?
Abstain. Do we have the salary amount?
It's, we can bring that up here. Actually, I can.
How many years has she been with us? Been quite a few, isn't it?
Quite a few years.
Quite a few years, yes. I'm just bringing, trying to bring up a spreadsheet right after.
Somewhere around $130,000.
I think it's one.
Yep. It would be $133,309.70.
That includes the 2.5?
That's the 2.5, yep.
I'm going to ask the same, ask the amount for the superintendent as well.
Were we prepared to vote on 22-196?
Yes.
We did vote.
We did. Did we vote? Well, you, we did. You kind of cut it off in mid.
There was an abstention, so we're, it's not complete yet.
She asked after. Okay. So, it was approved?
Yes.
Thank you.
I didn't vote on that one.
You abstained.
You abstained. We both abstained.
Next, 22-197, approve the salary adjustment of 2.5% for Robert M. Jokola, Superintendent of Schools, beginning July 1, '22.
May I have an amount that that's?
Yes, we're working on that. Do we, do we have an amount for you? 500 grand? Isn't it something like that?
Beer with you one second here.
Yeah. I'll make a motion to accept. Motion made. And seconded to accept 22-197.
Let's get the information first.
No, we, you, now, you can get the information. We, we made the motion and the second, now discussion.
Discussion on the motion. Right.
Thank you. Superintendent, I would think that you would know the amount that you are.
You know. I'm focused on other things. So, with that.
May I make a suggestion while you're calculating? May I suggest something while you're calculating?
It would be, it would be, for this fiscal year, it'd be $201,608.05.
$201,000 what?
608.05.
Motion has been made and seconded. Motion made.
Second.
And seconded to accept 22-197. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Are you going to ask all opposed?
What's your vote?
Oh, you just wanted to be.
You didn't ask all opposed?
No.
You're a no.
No, I'm a no, too.
And you're a no. So, 4 to 2 vote again, right?
Yeah.
May I also suggest something, you know, like, you know, you don't have to change this, but like, the 22-192, number 2223, when it just says FY '23 SEL and MH grant, $127,500, I have no clue what that's all about, so I'm going to be, I said no for that. Just, just so, for next time, can, can I get something to tell me what's, what this is for or where it's going to go or?
What the grant was for?
It says number 22-192.
Respectfully, and that's why we get these agendas early, too, so we can ask these questions ahead of time. And when you make a motion to approve, when you make a motion to approve the motion for the first, we can ask for a period of deliberation to ask that exact question.
That's why I said for the next time.
Yeah, no, that's, that's the moment to ask.
It was listed on this, this spreadsheet here. It was in a grant package. They had the Project Bread as the grant to submit and then the SEL and Mental Health Grants, the grant to accept.
Thank you so much.
All right, moving on.
We have one more. Yes, 22-199. Right. 22, well, we're going to table.
We have a, we have a motion to table.
Table 22-198.
Motion to table.
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded to table 22-198. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I believe that's unanimous. 22-199, approve the superintendent's recommendation to accept the first reading of the school district legal status policy, 6202.
Motion to accept.
Motion made to accept. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It is unanimous. No need for executive session. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion made and seconded to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.